Recording.
All right, we call this regular meeting of the Southwest Licking Local Board of Education to order. It is Thursday, April the 16th at 7:00 PM. We are on the online application Zoom, all at our own homes due to the quarantine stay-at-home order by the governor of the state of Ohio. We welcome all of our online viewers. If you'd like to stand and join us for the pledge of allegiance, we'll begin the meeting with that. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Neither republic.
Just stands.
One nation, one liberty.
Justice for all. I think we needed to rehearse that.
We weren't all together on that. That's all right. All right, Mr. Jones, will you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Moore. Mrs. Spindler.
She's there. I had to unmute and mute, but I'm here.
Mr. Vincent.
Here.
Mr. Zany.
Here.
Mrs. Engel.
Here. We have a quorum, we can continue. We need a motion for the adoption of the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Who wants to take the second? There was two at the same time.
Give it to Kathy.
All right.
Mr. Jones.
Mrs. Moore.
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler.
Yes.
Mr. Vincent.
Yes.
Mr. Zany.
Yes.
Mrs. Engel.
Yes. Passes, all right. We have approval of minutes. We have the March 19 minutes. We need a motion to approve those, please.
I'm of approval.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All right, Mr. Jones.
Mr. Zany.
Yes.
Mr. Vincent.
Yes.
Mrs. Moore.
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler.
Yes.
Mrs. Engel.
Yes. That motion passes, all right. We have a report from the treasurer. We need a motion to approve the financial report, and then we can have some discussion.
So moved.
I'll second that.
Right. Give me a second to look into it. So what you have attached is the executive summary for March 2020. We did have a large influx of property taxes because, like I indicated last month, we did not get our advances that we were expecting in February. So we got them all in March. Actually, we got our final settlements in March also. So actually, for year-to-date, our property tax didn't be about $337,000 higher than we expected. So that's a good thing. Other than that, it was a fairly routine month. There was really nothing out of the ordinary other than getting our property tax settlements. I'll be glad to answer any questions you have about the finances, but we're doing very well. We're about $700,000 ahead of where we anticipated being at this time. So that's a good thing.
Any questions for Mr. Jones?
Rick, will this COVID-19 affect this at all possibly? Or people can't pay their taxes or?
I think I don't expect much of a change this year for this school year end June 30th. Actually, it might help us because we're not necessarily paying subs right now. We're not paying fuel. We're not paying electricity, water, those kind of utilities. So it may actually help us in that part of it. Starting in July, I'm really concerned about the final sell, the first settlement in July for income tax is our largest. And with them moving the deadline back from April 15th to July 15th, I expect that's will come in lower than we anticipated. Hopefully, we'll make some of it up in October. But you saw the news, there's what? Five or six million jobs lost in the last two months nationwide. I do expect an income tax change, I mean, effect our income tax. And I do expect more basically delinquencies in our property taxes. We're just have to keep a hold of it, keep an eye on it, and see how far it goes.
Okay.
We kind of lose, we can use 2008 as a little bit of a guideline. You know, this is a completely different reason. So, you know, we lost a little bit first year income tax. We got really hit hard the second year. 2010 was our worst year of income tax collection. We were down about 12%, 15%. So we're about to keep a close eye on that. And hopefully, the economy, if we can get going again, will recover fast, fast enough. The income tax went down fast, but it came right back up very fast in two years, too. So as long as people start getting jobs and stuff, we should, we should get collected back. So we have, we do have a good balance. So we should hopefully be able to, you know, maybe go through this, okay? And then their big thing at School Foundation is basically housing.
Hey, Rick. Eric, I don't mean to interrupt you, but this isn't working. I'm getting a ton of text messages that people, it says they're waiting to be able to watch it. They can't get in. Are you getting that, Kathy? I don't know what's going on. I asked Jeff, and he says he could see it. And he sent a snapshot of the screen. But I'm, other people are texting me saying it says 15 people are waiting to view.
Yeah, I've got the same.
Yeah, I don't, I can't control how YouTube does stuff. I don't know if Jeff wants to send out the other. He said direct link. I sent the link to the general web, the general YouTube page.
He says he doesn't think you used the meeting he prepared. It's on our YouTube page. Not sure you can fix it.
Yeah, I used the meet, I directed him to the YouTube page. Not the, not the individual meeting, but directed to our school's YouTube page. So it should have been, it should have showed up one there. See if he can send the email out to SWL. I think also didn't, did Tanya send out the direct link?
She put it on, oh, now, now, one person says they're in. Is anyone in on your end, Kathy?
I'll check.
Maybe it's a YouTube thing, Rick. Maybe like it's their.
We are also recording this, and it will be posted, too. So it is getting recorded.
Okay. I just wanted to stop and tell people that I was getting messages.
Yeah.
I'm asking them to try again.
Okay.
If they're looking to follow the link, that was on Tanya's email that she sent out to everybody on cost of contact.
The link that was posted on Facebook is the one I know, the one that Deb shared, and I shared, and Candy shared, I think.
Is that the one we're having trouble with?
I think so.
That's the one directly to the meeting. That's not the one I sent, so.
Where's the one you sent?
I just sent to all staff and people with the meeting notice. So if nothing else, they should better go to YouTube and maybe do a search for our channel.
Okay.
Let me see if there's a way.
What's the name of our channel?
I think it's Southwest Licking Schools or SWL. Let me look at my email.
Yeah, I got your, I got your email. Hold on, let me see if I can get that copied real fast and get it out there.
Oh, my person said they have it.
Okay, mine did, too. So all of mine are in now. And Tanya's gonna post it right now.
Okay.
Good, all right.
Yeah.
For technical difficulties.
At least it's a good thing we have people online watching. That's a good.
Yeah. Yeah. They had said 17 people were waiting to get in. That's impressive. Yeah.
That's what, it's just not used to that many people. Look at that.
I had about seven people ask me for the link like five minutes before that we started.
So back to the finances, the last thing I want to say is School Foundation is the other thing. Obviously, this is hitting the state budget pretty hard.
Yes.
So, and basically, there may be a chance that we get a reduction if state needed. Hopefully, not this year, but there is a possibility next year. So we definitely gotta keep our ducks in a row and also keep an eye on our enrollment. Because last time we hit a recession, we kind of lost enrollment a little bit. So just gotta keep an eye on all that stuff as we move forward. It's definitely a moving target. But we do have a good balance to hopefully get us through this without having to make major changes through staffing or budget.
That's the, the, just the scuttle. I don't know, you know, nothing definitive, but I was out there that the unemployment's gonna run out at the end of, state unemployment's gonna run out at the end of June. And, and the state departments were being asked to cut budgets by 20% already. So I'm assuming that education will be there in the chopping block as well, so.
Yeah, I was told by attorney Becky Prince on that 20% did not include education.
It did not? Okay, good, good. That does make me feel better because I saw that 20%. Now I'm like, oh, my merciful heavens.
Me, it won't go that way, but she said at the department level, he said, look at doing 20 cuts, 20% this year, next year did not include education.
Did not include education? Good, okay.
But again, that is subject to change.
For sure, okay.
But I will say the conversations that I've had and that I've been on with other superintendents, they're, whoever they're all communicating with, they're hearing that there is going to be some cuts to the budget in July.
There will be, okay.
So it's like a waiting game, I guess, at this point.
Yeah, so we definitely just gotta keep an eye on it, and we might have to adjust our budget accordingly. It's kind of hard to be growing. Good, John, I'm sorry.
No, you're fine. I noticed some of the expenditures, we had certificated substitutes and classified substitutes. I know this is for March. Is that up to the day we were out?
Yes. And then we do, we still pay some subs because we have teachers out on maternity leave or other leaves. So we're still paying some subs. We're not paying any classified subs, but it'd be some, if there's a teacher, a long-term sub in for a teacher, we're still paying those subs.
Okay.
Any other questions for Mr. Jones? Anybody? All right, Mr. Jones, you can take the vote, please.
Mrs. Moore.
Yes.
Mrs. Engel.
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler.
Yes.
Mr. Vincent.
Yes.
Mr. Zany.
Yes.
All right, that passes. We need a motion to adjourn into executive session for the purpose of employment of a public official.
It's up to your board, think this is needed? It's up to you.
I'd like to.
I would second that.
All right, Mr. Jones.
What do you, a motion first? Oh, Deb's going, like, Deb's will first and second, okay.
You, that was a motion, Deb? I'm assuming.
Yes, I'm sorry, yes.
Okay.
And John second, so Mrs. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Vincent.
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler.
Yeah.
Mr. Zany.
Yes.
Mrs. Engel.
Yes. We are.
You know, I have to stop the recording.
Okay.
And pause the record.
Back from executive session. It is 7:33. Mr. Jones, will you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Moore.
Here.
Mrs. Spindler.
Here.
Mr. Vincent.
Here.
Mr. Zany.
Here.
Mrs. Engel.
Here. We have a quorum, we can continue. Number five A through E, we need a motion for one or all of those.
Motion to approve five A through E.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Jones.
Mrs. Spindler.
Yes.
Mrs. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Vincent.
Yes.
Mr. Zany.
Yes.
Mrs. Engel.
Yes. That passes. Number six, business items. Looks like we need to take these probably separately, I'm thinking. So six A, we need a motion to provide the option to parents for voluntary student insurance through Guaranteed Trust Life Insurance Company for 2020, 21 school year with no cost to the district.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Jones.
Mr. Vincent.
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler.
Yes.
Mrs. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Zany.
Yes.
Mrs. Engel.
Yes. That motion passes. Item six B, policy updates. We have a motion to approve first reading of multiple policies.
Move approval six B.
I'll second that. Any discussion on any of those? Or questions? Mr. Jones.
Mrs. Moore.
Yes.
Mrs. Engel.
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler.
Yes.
Mr. Vincent.
Yes.
Mr. Zany.
Yes.
That passes. Six C, memorandum of understanding with the Education Association. Motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Jones.
Mr. Zany.
Yes.
Mrs. Moore.
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler.
Yes.
Mr. Vincent.
Yes.
Mrs. Engel.
Yes. Motion passes. Sixty, distance learning resolution. Need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Is that Mrs. Spindler? Second.
There were two of us. I don't know who the other one was. Candy, maybe.
It was, but that's fine. You can, Kathy's fine.
Any questions about it?
Any questions on that one? Mr. Jones.
Mr. Vincent.
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler.
Yeah.
Mrs. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Zany.
Yes.
Mrs. Engel.
Yes. Passes. Six E, Licking Area Computer Association reorganization resolution. Need a motion to approve that.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion or questions? All right, Mr. Jones.
Mr. Zany.
Yes.
Mrs. Moore.
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler.
Yes.
Mr. Vincent.
Yes.
Mrs. Engel.
Yes. Motion passes. And the last thing is the athletic facility and bleachers project.
This is not a motion, this is a discussion. And Brian Wolf had brought it up for talking about it. I'm not sure everybody's involved. We're moving forward with the athletic facility. We're moving forward with the, the bond, the certificate of participation to get the money to pay for it. And Casey, I don't know if you will express your kind of the concerns and what this topic's about.
Sure, so I had just brought up, we actually had it in one of our subcommittees, that I was concerned about, you know, we have a lot of unknown entities right now. You know, we have the levy that's coming up here that we don't know the outcome of. We don't know the outcome of how this COVID-19 is going to impact the schools and our finances. And I just felt like it might behoove us to not get rid of, but just postpone a little bit, push back a little bit. The athletic complex and the bleacher project, I feel like it's a lot to explain. I understand it's a different funding source. And obviously, we understand how that works. But I think that's a hard thing to explain to the community that, you know, a $4 million facility, that money can't be used to educate kids. It's, it's a different funding, PI. And so it was my suggestion that we talk about, you know, putting a little break on moving forward with this facility until we know that we're sitting until levy passes, we're feeling like we're in a good place financially, we back to school, and then maybe we move forward with the facility.
So right now, I've talked to Brian about a little bit, and we're moving forward all the way up to bidding. So right now, we're looking at stopping at bidding, we have everything ready to go. But I guess that's what the board needs to say. Are you willing to put a pause on it for a little bit? We do have to have some kind of plan that if it's not ready by August of 21, that there's a chance that the kids somehow, we have to put locker rooms, or we have to carve out the existing high school locker rooms during renovation so we can use it. And then there, because I guess, you know, we only got about two years left of those bleachers before they're going to be essentially condemned. So it's going to have to happen sometime is, you know, when. And then if we can't, we're not going to be ready for the fall 21 season, you know, what's going to be our contingency plan?
Let's just assume the levy doesn't pass, which I don't think that's going to happen. But would we put a stop to this if that happened? Or can we still move forward?
We can still move forward, Roger, because like, as Casey was saying, it's basically, this is coming out of permanent improvement levy. It's not the general fund, so this money cannot be used to pay salaries. It can't be used to pay teachers or educate kids. It's for capital improvements, having a useful life five years or more.
So your concern, Casey, is that people misunderstand this and not vote for the levy?
I'm just concerned that I feel like, yes, that is part of it. I feel like it's, I feel like it's hard for the public to understand the different funding sources of schools because it's a pretty complex topic in general. And I'm concerned with the, we don't have an answer to the levy. And then I'm concerned with, you know, the unknown of what this is going to do financially to the district, the things that we don't know right now because of the shutdowns in the world. So I would just feel more comfortable, even if we put a pause for a couple of months and allowed us to see how we are, get back in school in August, make sure things are settled, have Rick, you know, give us some confidence in the budget and, and where things are going. And, and then also knowing that the levy's passed, and so that's good. I would, I would just personally feel more comfortable to the community and sharing that, knowing that we're at a good place financially. So that's just my personal opinion.
Right now, the plan is still to move forward with issuing the cops to pay for the facilities. So if we do this, we have to spend it within three years. So, you know, it gives us three years. I think Brian Wolf says it's going to take about a year or a little less than a year to build the athletic facility. So we got a little bit of time, but eventually, we're going to have to do it because of, basically, either we don't, if we don't spend the money, then it becomes taxable to the investors. That's not going to be a good thing for the district in the future for taxes offering. So we definitely gotta make sure we keep an eye on that if we decide to deposit forever. But we could deposit for a little while to have the negative effect. Other than a place for kids addressed in the fall 21 if it's not ready.
It would be, it would, I, I definitely see the issue of not, or building a building out at the stadium, and then in the meantime, saying, we're going to cut X number of teachers or X number of programs because our school foundation budget got cut and our levy didn't pass. And our, I mean, I understand 100%. You, we all understand 100% that that is different money. However, that is very hard to explain when, to the public, when you are building a fancy. I'm going to use fancy very loosely because we know it's not fancy. But when you're building a fancy new building, and, so now, I, I can see the, the benefit of a pause. I will, a brief hiatus on that.
When, when's the voting due? I've lost track now.
The 28th of April? The ballots have to be like postmarked by the 27th, is that right now?
I think something like that, yeah, so.
Yeah. When will we know, Rick? Do you know, have any idea?
I don't know for sure. Hopefully, I mean, they have 10 days, they have up to 10 days to certify the election after the election after 28. So we should definitely know by the beginning of basically May, within that 10-day period. So we should definitely know by the beginning of May, you know, middle, middle of May.
Yeah.
You know. You know, this is something that the board's okay with pausing, they will pause it. And then we could bring it back up either August or September, you know.
Well, I'm all for pausing it. I think that's not that much of a pushback or setback, and it makes sense. So let's, let's, I, I'm for doing that, so.
Is this, this one, you need an action for this, to pause?
No, we don't. But I guess at least we'll make sure the board's on board. If you feel better, you can obviously can pass the resolution. If not, we understand that based on your comments, you're okay with pausing it, and we'll bring it back up in the fall, either August, September. Hopefully, we have an idea where School Foundation is. We have an idea with our first income tax settlement coming in, and then definitely have an idea for the election, so.
I think we definitely bring it back up in August. Yeah.
Even if it is to say, we still need to pause.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm totally fine with that.
Yep.
Yeah.
Particularly because at that point, we're going to need to decide what we're going to do for athletics a year from then. I mean, that's, that's the issue at that point. If we know, yes, we're going to have to have the building built, or what are our other, what's the other plan?
Kathy, you okay? I guess that hurt from you yet, or?
No, I'm fine with the pause. My, my only hesitation would be the bleacher part of it. Because if we move into pausing longer term, I believe Lisa had mentioned those visitor bleachers are probably only good for one more year. So my concern would be if we're pausing longer than that timeframe, what do we do at that point? Do we just bring in potentially portable bleachers for that side? I mean, I guess that can be discussed later after the pause. But that would be my only hesitation, and it would only be that portion of it. But yeah, I'm fine with it overall, pausing.
Brian, they, they talked about putting the vote together. Now they're back to the bleacher and the building being two separate projects again. So, you know, we can obviously still move forward with the bleachers, you know, come August. We can still move forward with the bleachers, decide to pause the athletic for a little longer. It is an option that we could do, too, or we can move.
That's fine. We're still, I'm still fine with the pause and looking at it in August, though. But that's, like I said, that would have been my only hesitation.
That's all we have. Casey, you comfortable with that?
Yeah. Sounds good.
Yep.
All right. Item number seven, we have donations. We need to accept donations with thanks.
Motion approved seven A.
Second.
Any discussion?
We always appreciate donations, thank you.
Yeah, and I would like to add, too, just that, to thank Lynn's Fruit Farm. They have been really wonderful working with our food service to provide us for apples for lunches. So I think that's pretty incredible that to do that.
That was a pretty significant quantity of apples on that, so that was pretty nice.
Yeah.
I'm not sure that's listed on donations, but we could add it.
It's on there.
It is, it's on there.
I hope that the other day, I hadn't seen it lately, so, okay.
That's what we remember, I saw it, yeah.
Yeah, it was. Yeah.
All right, Mr. Jones.
Mrs. Spindler.
Yes.
Mrs. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Vincent.
Yes.
Mr. Zany.
Yes.
Mrs. Engel.
Yes. That motion passes. All right, item eight, superintendent item, the COVID-19 update, please.
Your favorite time of the month. So just to touch base kind of on a couple of things that are going or updates. So obviously, we're continuing to move forward with the virtual instruction. We shared today, Tanya put out a guideline for grading to help teachers. And then also on the board doc, that Exhibit A that we did with the, our resolution included just some guidelines that we've given to teachers to kind of how, what that instruction looks like. So for the most part, I think we've got a lot of the kinks worked out. Our biggest struggle right now is trying to meet the needs of the kids that we cannot get in touch with. So that is an ongoing battle that we're working with, you know, whether it's through phone calls and emails and Officer Brill helping out. So that's our, that's our big issue right now, are the kids that we're unable to reach. But we have lots of people actively looking to help on that. to reach. But we have lots of people actively looking to help on that. We're still, even with this, you know, COVID-19 going on, we're still committed to the hiring practice. And you saw there were people on there tonight, so we'll continue to move forward and stay up to date with that. We continue to pass out lunches each Tuesday. We gave out over 700 lunches this week. So, our number continues to stay about the same, pretty steady from week to week. And then our cooks prepare around 800 each week because sometimes we're a little heavy, some are a little light. And then we donate the extra lunches to the task, task community outreach, and then they help administer those to families if we don't give them all out. We have passed out over 800 Chromebooks. So, at this point, we did our last big push last Tuesday. So, now we're only giving them to kids that their parents reach out or the kid reaches out and says, I, I need your device. And then we make arrangements for them to come pick that up. Let's see. We're waiting on, obviously, I know I've started to get some questions. We're waiting on guidelines from the governor before we know what's going on for May. Once we know what's happening, if we're returning to school or not, then we'll start making some plans for closing down the school year, how kids may get their belongings, getting back Chromebooks, all that kind of stuff. And the big one is seniors. So, we're just kind of waiting to see. His update today said that we would know something next week. So, kind of unpause with that. All of us, we, all the admins are participating on weekly Zooms statewide with other administrators, even actually our teachers are doing that as well with teachers statewide. So, we're having lots of conversations with lots of people to keep up to date, to find out what's going on and best practices and to start talking about future planning for August. So, a lot of that is unknown right now and we'll, before we kick it into full gear, we'll wait to get some guidelines from, you know, ODE and the governor. But my, my feeling and initial conversations are that August might look vastly different than our normal education has looked. So, that's something that's on our radar and we'll be continuing to monitor and then to plan moving forward. And then we are working on a way to recognize our graduates in May. So, what we've decided is we are going to do something to have them get diplomas and gowns, et cetera, in May. Still holding on to the dates in June and July, hoping we can have a graduation. But if we can't have a graduation, at least we will have acknowledged them. They will have been given their diploma. They will have their gown, et cetera, in case June comes, July comes, and we're not able to do so. So, they might get a, hopefully, in an ideal world, they'll get acknowledged twice, which would be fantastic. And then also to go along with our seniors, we're looking at ways to honor our senior spring athletes, but we're gonna wait for additional guidance from Ohio High School to see if they'll get a shortened season or if that's something else that they won't get to participate in. So, a lot of unknowns still. I think we'll know a lot more in the next week, once we get some guidance as to what's going on with schools. Have you guys, do you guys have any questions on anything that we're doing or anything you've heard or any clarity on?
I just, you're thinking how we shake hands. We obviously will not be doing that, so we'll have to think of something different.
Yeah.
There's at least one that I will, well, I'll do a little more than shake hands with.
Yeah.
Saying.
Fair, fair enough, fair enough.
Thank you to all the teachers and staff that are working. And I apologize if you've heard me on Zooms using inappropriate language.
Definitely a learning curve for everybody.
Absolutely.
I agree. So, that's it. If you guys don't have anything for me, that's kind of my, just to bring you up to speed with where we're at.
Okay. Any questions for, any for Ms. Perkins or Ms. Jones? All right. We need a, get an executive session. We need a motion to adjourn into executive session for the purpose of confidential business information of an applicant for economic development assistance.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Jones?
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mr. Zani?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes. We are in executive session at 7:54.
Things started, go ahead.
All right. We are back from executive session at 8:06. Mr. Jones, please call the roll.
Mrs. Moore?
Here. I don't see the live, though.
No, I just.
Thirty seconds probably to start up. No, just like it does. It'll take, take 30 seconds start, just like it takes 30 seconds to end. So, it says live in the upper right. It says preparing. There we go. All right. So, Mrs. Moore?
Here.
Mrs. Spindler?
Here.
Mr. Vincent?
Here.
Mr. Zani?
Here.
Mrs. Engel?
Here. We have a quorum. We can continue. Last item, we need a motion for adjournment.
So moved. Second. I beat you.
Everybody was enjoying themselves so much. They wanted to give.
They wanna wait. Any discussion? All right, Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
What's that?
My kid just walked down the hall. Sorry.
Okay, hold on. I think I had mine playing. That's why I got, it was coming through the speaker. So, I actually didn't get through it all. So, let me, I started, I got to Mr. Vincent.
Yes.
Mr. Zani?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
We are adjourned at 8:08.